Good afternoon and welcome to the City Council Meeting of December 11th, 2023. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask that you all rise for the singing of our national anthem.
Oh Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north strong and free. From far and wide, oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and to our very own Tenille Towns for the singing of our national anthem. I would like to now take the opportunity to read our land acknowledgement. The city respectfully acknowledges the Beaver Creek-Denny-Maiti people as the original caretakers of these lands and surrounding areas. We are grateful to live, learn, work, and play on Treaty VIII territory within Turtle Island, and acknowledge these lands have been home to diverse and sovereign First Nations and Inuit nations since time immemorial. And thank you for that. Moving on, on our agenda, the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes, recognizing councillor O'Connor.
Mayor Clayton, I'd like to move that council adopt the minutes of city council meeting held November 27th, 2023 as presented.
Thank you for that. That motion is in order. I'll see if there's anyone in the queue for discussion or debate. Seeing none, call the question. Please vote.
Councillor Bosch in favor.
Councillor Berg in favor.
And that carries unanimously. Now moving on to the adoption of today's agenda. And I will just want to check one thing before you do that. All right, recognizing councillor Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Is this as amended?
Yes.
I move that we adopt the agenda for December, what's the date today?
11th.
11th, as amended.
Perfect. So.
My glasses on. I could tell it said 11 and not 11.
Motion is in order. So the addition is item 8.3, the public member appointments. Motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. Please vote.
Councillor Berg in favor.
And that too carries unanimously. Moving on to the delegation portion of our meeting. A reminder to those who are watching, at any time you'd like to come speak to council, there is a form online. You can choose the afternoon session. If we are having an evening session that day, there would be an option for the evening session as well. Today, we have one delegation who let us know ahead of time. Mr. Ian McDonald, I know that him and his colleague are online today, so.
Good afternoon and welcome to the City Council Meeting of December 11th, 2023. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask that you all rise for the singing of our national anthem.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and to our very own Tenille Towns for the singing of our national anthem. I would like to now take the opportunity to read our land acknowledgement. The city respectfully acknowledges Beaver Creek Denny and Mat people as the original caretakers of these lands and surrounding areas. We are grateful to live, learn, work, and play on Treaty 8 territory within Turtle Island and acknowledge these lands have been home to diverse and sovereign First Nations and Inuit nations since time immemorial. And thank you for that. Moving on, on our agenda, the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes recognizing councillor O'Connor.
Mayor Clayton, I'd like to move that council adopt the minutes of City Council meeting held November 27th, 27th, 2023 as presented.
Thank you for that. Those motion, that motion is in order. I'll see if there's anyone in the queue for discussion or debate. Seeing none, call the question, please vote.
Councillor Bosch in favor.
Councillor Berg in favor.
And that carries unanimously. Now moving on to the adoption of today's agenda. And I will just, I want to check one thing before you do that. All right, recognizing councillor Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Is this as amended?
Yes.
I move that we adopt the agenda for December, what's the date today?
11th.
11th, as amended.
Perfect, so.
My glasses on, I could tell it said 11 and not 11.
Motion is in order. So the addition is item 8.3, the public member appointments. Motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question, please vote.
Councillor Berg in favor.
And that too carries unanimously. Moving on to the delegation portion of our meeting, a reminder to those who are watching, at any time you'd like to come speak to council, there is a form online. You can choose the afternoon session. If we are having, having an evening session that day, there would be an option for the evening session as well. Today, we have a delegate, one delegation who let us know ahead of time. Mr. Ian McDonald, I know that him and his, his colleague are online today, so please, gentlemen, feel free to turn on your cameras whenever you're ready. And just a reminder for delegations, delegations are allowed five minutes. Then there's an opportunity for council to ask the delegation questions. And then our delegation business is dealt with later in the meeting. So I'll turn it over to Mr. McDonald. And just sorry, before you start, if you could just introduce yourselves for those who may be watching at home. Go ahead, Mr. McDonald.
Are we?
Yeah, you're, yeah, you're good to go and it looks like you're live, so please just introduce yourself for those who are watching at home and then feel free to take your five minutes and council can ask you questions following. Thank you.
Thank you, council. My name's Ian McDonald and I represent the 89 IFF members of the Grand Prairie Fire Department. Myself and our Secretary Treasurer, Landon Daniel, are here today to speak to council about a recent decision in the 2024 operations budget deliberations. Like police and EMS, our members are on the front line of public safety 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, providing protection and prevention services in our community by delivering professional 911 dispatch, fire prevention, and fire suppression and medical co-response and first response services to the citizens of Grand Prairie. We have seen a consistent increase in the demand for our services from a predicted 15% increase in our 911 call answer volume in 2023 to a prevention branch that has limited capacity due to staffing numbers and a suppression branch that continues to face reduced fire response capabilities as a result of the EMS crisis within our community and region, while calls for service remain the same or are increasing. In 2022, Fire Administration proposed the hiring of four flex firefighters for the 2023 operations budget, which was amended to two positions during budget deliberations with a commitment to review the data in 2023 for more positions. With this in mind, it came as a great shock to all of our members when we were informed that the department was chosen to have a staff reduction. Every position matters, period. The Association and Fire Administration have enjoyed a positive working relationship with the shared value of helping people. And in that spirit, we have engaged in dialogue around staffing needs and as recently as this fall, felt that Fire Administration had put forward a good business case for additional staff that would assist with operations, help reduce a substantial overtime budget, and was financially positive for the department. To have a staff reduction after hearing the business case leaves the Association questioning how public safety is being taken within the city. While other municipalities of similar size with half the call volume for service like Medicine Hat have expanded, an air jury is set to add a station and another 24 members starting in 2024, 25, we decide to reduce position. The Association requests that council reconsider's the staff reduction decision at the Fire Department for the 2024 operating budget and engage Fire Administration on their business plan for the health, wellness, and safety of our members and the safety of our community.
All right, thank you for your presentation, Mr. McDonald. I'll open it up to council for questions. I see no questions. I appreciate you coming here today. And just as mentioned, delegation business is dealt with towards the end of our meeting. And I appreciate you're more than welcome to stay on and, and listen to that. I just asked that you turn your camera off, otherwise Administration will follow up with you in regards to any business that may be arising.
Thank you.
Moving on to committee business, item number seven, council committee of the whole budget deliberations, looking for a motion for that, council. Item 7.1, councillor Teason.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council approve the 2024 operating budget and the 2024 capital budget as presented.
Sorry, just before that, would you mind the?
Oh, sorry.
Motion one before.
Yeah, the minutes, sorry, my bad.
All right.
Jumped right to motions. Council adopt the minutes of the council committee, the whole budget deliberations held November 15th to 17th, 2023 as presented.
Thank you for that. So an opportunity, if there happened to be any errors that council saw or omissions in the minutes, please jump in the queue. Seeing none, I'll call the question on the motion to adopt the minutes.
Councillor Berg in favor.
Councillor Plott.
In favor.
And that carries unanimously. Now moving on to the business from that, councillor Teason.
All right, thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I will do these all as a whole, and if anybody wants to split any out, you're more than welcome to. No, one at a time?
Yeah.
All right, let's do it one at a time. Council, I would move that council approve the 2024 operating budget and the 2024 capital budget as presented.
Thank you, that motion is in order. An opportunity for discussion or debate. Seeing none, I'll call the question.
Councillor Berg in favor.
That carries unanimously. Councillor Teason.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council approve in principle the 2025 to 2027 operating and capital budgets as presented.
Thank you for that. Seeing no one in the queue for discussion or debate, call the question.
Councillor Berg in favor.
And that carries unanimously. Councillor Teason.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council give first reading to bylaw C-1395M, being an amendment to the fees, rates, and charges by law.
Perfect, that motion is in order, no discussion or debate in first reading. Call the question.
Councillor Berg in favor.
And that carries unanimously. Councillor Teason.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council give second reading to bylaw C-1395M, being an amendment to the fees, rates, and charges by law.
Perfect, an opportunity for discussion, debate, questions for administration. Seeing none, I'll call the question, please vote.
Councillor Berg in favor.
And second reading passes unanimously. Councillor Teason.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council have third reading at this meeting.
All right. In order for this, for third reading to happen here today, this motion must pass unanimously. I'll call the question.
Councillor Berg in favor.
And that carries unanimously. Councillor Teason.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council give third reading to bylaw C-1395M, being an amendment to the fees, rates, and charges by law.
That motion is in order. An opportunity for discussion or debate. Seeing none, I'll call the question.
Councillor Berg in favor.
All right, thank you for that, councillor Teason. Moving on to item 7.2, I will turn this over to councillor O'Connor.
I'd like to move that council adopt the minutes of the Financial and Administration Services Committee meeting held December 5th as presented.
Thank you for that. That motion is in order. I'll call the question.
Councillor Berg in favor.
And that carries unanimously. Any highlights from your meeting, councillor O'Connor?
Yes, under assessment and taxation, a new tax system is now in place. It will allow for updated presentation of information. Penalty reminder letters have been mailed out to accounts with outstanding balances to remind owners of the next penalty date of January 1st. Administration is wrapping up the creation of new assessments for 2024. In finance, administration is working with all departments, planning and preparing for year-end procedures as well as working on November month-end. And in procurement, work is going with the Grand Prairie Police Service to source requirements and development, develop agreements with community service providers, and vehicle orders are in development. Tenders are being prepared for 2024 construction with three bids currently on the market. And that is my report.
Thank you for that, councillor O'Connor. Moving on to the Invest GP Committee meeting, item 7.3, I'll turn this one over to councillor Blackmore.
And I would move that council adopt the minutes of the Invest GP Committee meeting held December 5th as presented.
That motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question.
Councillor Berg in favor.
That carries unanimously. You have a couple items of business, councillor Blackmore.
I do, thank you. First, I would move that council approve amendments to policy 318 as presented and reallocate $55,700 to the DIG capital account. And in speaking to this, the Economic Recovery Program was established by council during COVID and has not all been dispersed. And so in order to make the money, put the money in places where it is more valuable for our businesses in the community, the recommendation is to move that money out of funds that are closing and put them into funds that are still open. The exception to that would be the sidewalk and patio grant application process, which is being revised at this time, and people who are interested in sidewalk patios will learn more about that at a later date.
All right, and so just for formality, it's the beautification and patio grant. All right.
Yeah, sidewalk grants.
So that motion is in order. Opportunity for discussion and debate, and I recognize councillor Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. My apologies as I wasn't here last week, so I just had a question for administration. I thought the original recommendation was from the committee to close all of the grants, and I'm just wondering why we chose to leave the beautification and patio grant open.
I can answer the stat, the committee had a discussion, the recommendation was from administration and council had discussion, committee had discussion and debate and chose to keep it open.
Okay, so, so for me, I won't be supporting this. We've had this patio and beautification grant open for three years. We had two people apply in the last six months and we're still stagnating $156,000 there. I'm with supporting closing them all. I think, when you, when you have grants, I think it's great that you will put them open, but I don't like the idea of them being never, never programs. And so I feel like if we just add this on for another year, we're just expanding this for another year, and I think there's much better use that we could be looking at putting that money into our community. We've had two people apply in six months, and so it would encourage us to not support it. My apologies for not being here, I would have spoke much more about this last week, but I just, I think we've had this open long enough, so I can support it.
All right.
And if I may, I will just answer that councillor Plott, in that administration is bringing forward in the next, right after the new year, a policy to make it easier for people to apply for sidewalk patios, patio beautification. And so it was felt that it was better to leave that money there until that policy either succeeds or fails on its own merits.
Councillor Bressi.
Yeah, thank you. I'm glad for that additional information. I know, talk to people, I talked to businesses that were thinking about doing patios and they were just nervous about the city process and they thought that it wasn't worth risking their time figuring out to maybe get a no or maybe get told you have to do it in a very prescriptive way that's not going to work for us. And it was painful for at least one business I know of that got a patio in eventually, but it was a lot of heartache and kind of beating their head up against the wall, it felt like at times, at times for them. So I get why it's undersubscribed. I'm really optimistic that this will be well subscribed next year, but I absolutely think if we don't, if we create that program, we don't see uptake, then we should be going this program. So I agree with your general sentiment, councillor Plott, but I think there's good reason to believe that we'll actually see an uptake on this this year.
Councillor Bosch.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I too am in advocate for these grants, both beautification in regards to facade and to patio. I think, given the statement of the past three years, nobody has really subscribed, speaks to where we're at financially, be it through the COVID years or through inflation and issues that arrive from inflation. So I'm optimistic that people will use this. I know some of the people that I talked to during the Small Business Week visits were really excited to see this hopefully stay and, you know, get a, get a 50/50 grant. They're still putting money in too, so it's not like we're giving away all the money at 100%, so they're putting some skin in the game.
All right, so opportunity for councillor Blackmore to close, if you wish. Seeing none, I'll call the question. The motion to was in your package, please vote.
Councillor Berg in favor.
That's carried eight to one. Moving on to item 7.3.2, councillor Blackmore.
I would move that council recap, council recapitalize the barrier-free grant, which is policy 356, with $125,000 from the General Economic Recovery Fund. And in speaking to this, the barrier-free grant currently doesn't have enough funds in it to, for anyone to be able to access. It has been a fairly popular grant that we've made available to businesses in the past, and so this would recapitalize it to ensure that we encourage businesses to continue continue constructing barrier-free access.
All right, the motion is in order. Councillor Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Just again, a question on this. If I'm reading the report correctly, they can get up to $5,000 on this for the grant for the barrier-free? And so.
Yep, no. Sorry, I'm just going to go to Ms. McCackren. Can you maybe just provide another update?
Thank you, through the mayor, yes, it's up to $10,000.
So I guess for me, I'm supportive of us continuing something on there. I'm not liking the amount of $125,000.
Would you like to amend?
So I would like to make an amendment that we make that to $50,000. And to speak to that, we've had three in the past six months. We've had 15 total in about, I think this has been open just about three years. That would still leave five to maybe seven or eight people could still apply. Again, I don't think it's healthy for us to keep these programs open forever, and I think at $125,000, we've had that amount in there for three years and we didn't subscribe at all, so I don't know if I feel comfortable with us leaving that much money. So my motion is to move that to $50,000.
Okay, so the, we're going to discuss and debate on the amendment, which is to amend the motion to recapitalize the barrier-free grant, policy 356, with $50,000 from the General Economic Recovery Fund. Councillor Teason on the amendment.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I was going to speak to this motion one way or another, and so I guess I'm speaking to the amendment right now. And I'm sorry, councillor Plott, I can't support this. I know that for the last two terms and a half, council's been very deliberate about trying to encourage development in a variety of ways. This was one way to make the community more accessible for everybody and realizing that really, we only have our fingers in the pot of public facilities to offer up a grant for a business, to maybe widen their doorways or build a wheelchair ramp or, in the case of Fletcher House, which I know they got a brand new elevator in there, you know, a brand new elevator so that people can get all the way up to the top floors. These are grants that, you know, I don't know, they benefit the community altogether, especially for people that are suffering from, you know, different abilities than what you or I may, may experience. I just want to send a quick shout out to our staff and administration at East Link Center. I know that we had our own elevator down this past week and probably for a bit longer than that, and it just got up and running again. And for people who required and needed that elevator, it was an issue about using our public facilities. So if we can make getting around and into businesses a lot more easier for people, I think that's, that's the right way to go. On top of that, I have a feeling that maybe there's a lot of businesses that are either building up to code a certain way or they built to a certain way and they're maybe just not even aware that these types of grants exist to help make their business a bit more accessible, so I can support it.
Thank you for your comments. Councillor Bressi on the amendment.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'm struggling with this one, because on one hand, this is my absolute favorite grant program we've done. I absolutely love helping buildings become more accessible to. I absolutely love helping buildings become more accessible to people that have troubles accessing services. Same time, I really hear what you're saying about this being a slow uptake, and I hate having money sitting around just for the sake of having money sit around. So I think I'm inclined to support this, but if this amendment does pass, and we do pass the motion, I also think we should be directing administration to report back when this is half-subscribed or two-thirds subscribed, so that we can make sure that it's getting recapitalized, if it needs recapitalization. So still struggling with how I'm on this motion, but I think if it passes, we've got some additional business to do.
Okay. So Counselor O'Connor on the amendment.
Yes, I will not be supporting this motion as there. Yes, it's been a slow uptake, but I'm, I'm not waffling on this one. I think we need to leave the money there to allow people to improve access for all the quality of life in this community. So for that reason, I won't support this motion.
Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I also won't support it. We've got a young community. That means there's parents with double-wide carriages, we've got seniors that are in walkers and canes, we've got wheelchairs, we've got hearing issues, people are deaf, and on-site vision. This is something that I would like to say, don't mess with this amount, and if the need isn't there next year, then I would be open to change, but I would really like it to be kept the way it is. Thank you.
Counselor Blackmore.
I'm thinking, Mayor Clayton. I will also speak against the amendment. We don't just have money laying around. It's not like we shove it in a drawer and wait for someone to come and ask for it. That money is earning and making a living while it's not being spent, whether it is in a line item on account A or in a line item on account 32. It's still invested in active money that's doing a good job for the people who live in Grand Prairie. So I am fully supportive of keeping it under this particular line item, as I feel that it is valuable to our community to encourage all of our businesses and not-for-profit organizations to support barrier-free access.
Counselor Bosch.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. My apologies, Counselor Plott, I'm not going to support this one. I will support the full amount if that gets to that point. I do think we still have a lot of work to do with accessibility, not only this elevator that Counselor Thiessen was talking about, but just recently, just watching social media and, you know, people talking about, we're not quite there yet, and we have some work to do. So I won't support this one, but hopefully the next one.
Counselor Plott.
Is this for close, or is there anybody else? Thank you.
Counselor Berg.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. It's just too deep of a cut for me, and I do like the idea of possibly cutting a little bit of it, and as Counselor Bressi mentioned, come back if, if it's oversubscribed, but the cut's just too deep for me, so I'm going to be opposed on this one.
Okay. Counselor Plott, close.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Looks like it's going to be a 1-8 day for me here, but I'm just going to throw it. I'm not saying to get rid of the funding, and if you look in our report, it says there's been three awarded in the last six months. So at that pace, at $5,000, at $50,000, we could have a year and a half worth of potential grants come in. It's three years, and for me, the reason that I get concerned when we leave buckets of money, whether we think it's a great use or not, do I want to see barrier-free? Yeah, we want to see as many businesses apply for this as we can. It's been open almost three years, and we've had 15. So in three years, we've awarded just over 120. So we're going to still stagnate $125,000 for something that we've barely had enough subscription in three years to get to there. So appreciate your probably not supporting this motion. I guess we just came through budget, and we're trying to find ways to be creative with our financing. This $75,000 could have been put back into a pot that could go towards another creative idea. The longer it sits in this pot, the less of a chance for us to come up with another creative idea to how to spur on economic development in other areas, so I hope you can support it.
If you're closed, Counselor Plott, call the question. This is on the amendment, a reminder.
Counselor Berg opposed.
That's defeated seven to two. Counselor Bressi.
Great. Thank you, motion. Thank you, if the chair will permit, I'm going to try a different amendment to see if I can get colleagues to support me. And the amendment was to strike $125,000, insert $80,000, and direct administration to report back when the fund is 50% expended. I don't think I need to spend a lot of time talking about that. I hope I'll get your support.
Opportunities for discussion or debate. Seeing no one, I'll call the, sorry, Counselor O'Connor.
I'm not sure if I could support that. One of the things that's critical is maybe we need to ask administration that 5,000 may not be enough in the grant, so I think that would be the question.
Ten. It's ten.
It's ten. Thank you. I thought it wasn't five, so thank you very much. If they haven't added it, I would like to recommend that we up the amount, because it's very expensive, being in the construction industry. Just to change a door out, you could spend 5,000 without even trying hard, without the electronics, so.
Thank you. So just to clarify, $10,000 is a grant, therefore the matching portion equals, becomes a $20,000 project up to. Counselor Thiessen.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I'm with Counselor O'Connor on this one. I don't think we can, we can scamp in in a year, like Counselor O'Toole said. If we haven't spent the money, then we can determine what we want to do there. We are just coming out of a really rocky few years for business and for everyone, so having a little bit of extra money to match a grant such as this, or to use it to improve your business, maybe they didn't have enough pennies in the, in the bank account, but I feel like it's important that we keep every bit of money in here, the $125,000. And to speak to budget, I think council works significantly hard alongside administration to find the most appropriate cuts and the most appropriate ways to spend pool and set up funds such as this in our, in our grants. So yeah, I don't think I can support this, Counselor Bressi. I'm really big on sticking with the plan, as discussed at committee, and recapitalizing this for $125,000, and hopefully businesses and not-for-profits can capitalize on the funds. Thank you.
Counselor Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. A question for administration. If somebody were to apply for the grant, and we gave them 10,000, and their paperwork were coming at $25,000, does it change the assessment value of their property?
CFO, white-way.
Sorry, could you just repeat that again?
So I'm just curious, so if we were to, if an applicant was successful, and their paperwork showed it was a $25,000 improvement, and we wrote them a check for 10, and they put in 15, does that change the assessment of their property?
Thank you for the question. It could. I can't say for how much, and it could depend on a lot of other factors too as well for the total property assessment. So it's, it's pretty difficult to narrow down if it's actually going to improve an assessment or not.
No, I appreciate that, and I appreciate the motion, Counselor Bressi. It's probably, I went a little too deep on mine, but I think this is a really good, a nice saw-off in the middle.
I'll just jump in the queue. I too will support the amendment. I don't think this is a question or conversation about supporting accessibility. This is about finding a solution where we have great outcomes in accessibility in our community. So having that check-in where you will see an update from our CFO in regards to, or someone from her team, in regards to how the application process is going in regards to accessing this grant, I think we'll keep council up to date and in tune, and at that point, maybe the additional revenue does get supplemented to, to the full amount of $125,000. So I will support the amendment. Counselor Bressi to close.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I guess I'll speak to it. I've, I think there's a saying of you always leave them wanting more, and it's better for something to be close to subscribe or overscribe than not. I really hope that this is a program we have for a long, long time to come in our community. I can't think of, I can think of few better ways to get the community pushed back against it and get future councils to kill it, than it's just got a lot of money that sits in around and doesn't get used. And so I think appropriately capitalizing this is the best way to make sure there's longevity of this program. Again, with the report back, when it's 50% capitalized, council can refill it at that, at that point. I have troubles imagining council not finding another $50,000 to put into it at that point. I really, so I really would encourage council to free up that money for now, so that not only can we be making better impact of the tax dollars we've got today, but also I really do think it's a better way to ensure the long-term viability of this program.
Okay, that was Counselor Bressi's close. This is to vote on the amendment. Call the question.
Counselor Berg in favor.
And that carries six to three. Moving on to the main motion, the motion as amended in your package, we'll now read that council recapitalize the barrier-free grant policy 356 with $80,000 from the General Economic Recovery Fund. Discussion or debate on the motion as amended? Counselor Bosch.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would like to possibly amend it by asking if we can look at the funding from 10,000 to 20,000 as a matching grant. And why I say that is because I think like Counselor O'Connor said, the cost to do business like this, and projects like this, putting an elevator in, for instance, or stairs, fixing stairs, is a great deal of money. It is, it is difficult to get it done between, you know, $20,000 or so. So I'd like to see an amendment with, would we put in amendment or bring it back to committee?
Yeah. I was just going to suggest if you're going to make a fairly substantive change to a policy that you direct it go back to standing committee, or direct it to administration, or bring back information in regards to that.
Second motion.
Yeah, yeah.
Good. I'll do that.
Okay. Yeah. So I'll call the question, amend the motion. So one thing I missed on the first piece was the fact that it will now, it includes the portion to direct administration to report back when this fund is 50% subscribed. So I'll call the question, please vote.
Counselor Berg in favor.
And that carries unanimously. Now Counselor Bosch.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd like to move that we send this policy back to administration to look at perhaps a different model in the process of applying for this grant. And I said it all before, so.
So it's a motion to direct administration to bring back a report with additional information, where the process would be a max, an application with a maximum up to $20,000 of matching grant, or matching personal dollars. Counselor Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I can't support this motion. I don't want to send administration to come back for work with something I won't support when it gets there. And the reason I won't support it is if you're, if you're buying a purchasing, or purchasing a building like that, that you think is going to need a barrier-free grant, you're probably purchasing a builder, building that's already had that baked into its price. You're buying a used property, that's going to be very less significant than buying a brand-new property that would have been met code and had that put into it. So I think that $10,000 is a fair number. If this is something, and again, we've had three people apply with it, what I don't want this to be is where people go, holy, I can get that much money, and now I'm going to do a whole bunch of stuff. There's not very many people putting in major elevators, chairlifts. This was more, from the applications I've seen coming in, making people make sure their door was wide enough, and odds and ends, and I think $20,000 to do that is more than enough. So I just won't support it, because I think it's an exercise our admin would have to go through, and it's going to get here, and I'm going to make a more conscious effort of not supporting things that's going to go to administration if I'm not going to support it when it comes back.
Counselor Bressi.
Yeah, thank you. I don't think I can support it either. For me, where, really where I get excited about these grants is when they're spent, when they're spent by a small business owner, and who really doesn't have a lot of capitalization behind them, and would literally never be able to afford to improve their building unless they, unless they got this. And for me, this really is smaller grants, like making sure that that, that entryway is level enough that you can get in, adding some handrails, doing a washroom, widening a doorway, things like that. I'm worried as we start to get bigger, that those larger, that all of a sudden it becomes worthwhile for those larger companies that could afford to do this on their own, to start eating up these grants. And so for me, the 10,000, I think is at about the right amount of what I personally picture this grant being for.
Counselor Berg.
Yeah, thanks. I think I will support this. I want to learn some more information. I know construction costs have skyrocketed over the past four years when this was introduced, or it could be slightly longer, but I think I need some more information, and I welcome it, so I'll be supporting this.
I have a question for administration, I'm just going to jump in the queue. Chief McEckern, do you happen to recall in the discussions, I don't think it's in the report, I apologize if it is, the individuals, 15 total applicants, or even the past, the three that applied in the past six months, the total project dollar amount per project? I'm just curious, were they, was it costing 40, and we were only giving them 10? Was it closer to 20?
Thank you, Mayor. I did just check with the team. It is closer to the 20. The majority of ones that have come forward have been actually just below the 10,000.
Okay. Thank you for that. Counselor O'Connor.
Yes, just getting the drawings done to submit to city would be a couple of grand, so I think that drops a hole quite quickly, so I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
Counselor Bosch to close.
Thank you. I think, you know, with some of the statements of bigger companies maybe going into the pot, ultimately for me, the outcome is accessibility. I don't care if you have a newer building than the next guy. If it's accessible to, to the population base, that's what we're here for, that's what we're doing. In regards to buying a new build or an older building, some people just can't buy a new build, or a relatively new build, and they need to do a lot of changes with accessibility in the business that, or the building that they do purchase. So if you have one bathroom, heaven knows, you might put two bathrooms in and need more than $20,000. So I think that looking at the last three years and how little people have spent overall, I'm hopeful that people will look into their businesses as a, as a bright future to, you know, do some, conduct some changes into progress. So I'll hope you support this.
Thank you for your close, Counselor Bosch. I'll call the question.
Counselor Berg in favor.
And this carries five to four. Highlights from your meeting, Counselor Blackmore.
Thank you. We will start with recent rural renewal stream statistics. 535 candidate endorsement letters have been issued, 661 employer applications have been received with another, including 33 in the Q4 review. Additionally, administration continues to work with other municipalities and the province to share their knowledge about rural renewal stream as we've become an authority more or less on that subject. Between November 13th and 26th, we've had nine new home-based businesses and 10 new commercial businesses who were sent welcoming emails and issued licenses. Work continues with the development of a marketing plan and workforce development initiatives, which include a new regional website to be launched in 2024. Planning for the 2024 Growing the North Conference is underway with a great lineup of speakers, and that conference is now open for early bird registration. In investment attraction, administration has joined the county's economic development team in an investment tour to better understand production and export of honey from the area to foreign markets. Thank you to the county for including the city in that opportunity. A business roundtable was hosted to gather input regarding investment attraction opportunities as part of the work to build a comprehensive investment attraction plan and pitch book to support attraction in key sectors. And finally, in events and entertainment, there's been some great things happening around the city. There are still tickets available for the Stars on Ice, which is tomorrow night, and features Elvis Stoyko at the Bonnet Center, and council will be handing out cake at the New Year's evening out celebration at Muscat CP Park, which will include fireworks at 10:30 PM. And for those who enjoyed the Grand North Winter Festival the last two years, the next one is scheduled for January 12th to the 14th, and we were fortunate to receive a $30,000 grant from Travel Alberta to help support that event in our city. And that concludes my report. Mayor Clayton.
Thank you for that, Counselor Blackmore. Moving on to item 7.4, the Strategy and Communication Services Committee held on November 27th? Is that correct? I'll turn this over to Counselor Thiessen.
Nope, it is December 5th.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would move that council adopt the minutes of the Strategy and Communication Services Committee meeting held December Committee meeting held December 5th as presented.
Thanks for that. That motion is in order. I'll call the question.
Counselor Bergen, favor.
And that carries unanimously. Counselor Teason, a couple items of business.
You betcha. First item of business is Council Policy Number 120, the City Manager Performance Management. I would move that council approve updates to Policy 120, the City Manager Performance Management. Speaking to this motion here, this says includes amendments that make the person working in the, in the CEO's position more gender neutral in its language, using them there instead of he, she, as it currently is. Also updated the language under responsibilities, which formally said that the city would help the city CEO work through his performance objectives, where that would be adjudicated by council. That is all.
Thanks for your introduction, Counselor Teason. Counselor Plot.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Just a question for administration on this. When I read through the package on it, I'm just wondering if there was any discussion about a committee be doing the actual performance review, not just the mayor? Was there a discussion about it being a small subcommittee, or I'm just wondering why it's just the mayor? I know that's been our past practice, but...
So as presented, the actual policy is the mayor, however, the mayor has the opportunity to implement a small committee, which I have done in the past.
So I guess for me, I would be much more comfortable if it wasn't just the mayor's discretion about adding a committee. I think that this should actually be a committee. And just to speak to it last term even, we had an issue at one point where I think it might have been a conflict with some stuff there. And I think if we would have had a smaller committee of three, where the mayor picked two other council members that made a performance review committee, I just think that sets the city up to a safer place to have this actually by committee. It's not an O'Connor current mayor, or any mayor moving into the role. There is just times when a mayor and a city manager might not see eye to eye on stuff. And I think when you put it as a one-on-one situation, it worries me about that when we're doing a policy like this moving forward. So I'm just struggling with that a little bit. I'm, we'll see, seeing if there's any other conversation about it, but I just wanted to ask if there was any thought put into that being by committee and not just by the mayor?
Just for clarification, there has always been a committee as long as I've been the mayor and the interim mayor, so.
My question is, is this is saying that you can appoint one? This isn't saying that it has to be appointed, it's really...
I'm just clarifying. Yeah, thanks for that. Chief McCackren.
Thank you, Mayor. That is not a conversation that we had as part of this update on the policy, but happy to take direction of council.
Okay. There is a motion on the floor, seeing no further discussion or debate. Call the question.
Counselor Bergen, favor.
That's carried eight to one. Counselor Teason.
Awesome, thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Moving on to second recommendation, council approve updates on procedure 120-1, City Manager Performance Management. And this is that area where the updated language is under responsibilities for council. Just in light of the previous conversation, I don't, I don't actually take any issue. I've been on three terms, and most of the time, it's been pretty awesome, so I understand where hesitation is. As per the policy, it says that each member of council would have their say in it, and the mayor's collecting that, and then talking with them. So I think the committee is council. We don't need to have a sub of a sub, where our CEO follows council as a whole's direction, and usually through the mayor, so I don't have any qualms about it.
All right. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question.
Bressi in favor. Counselor Bergen, favor.
That carries unanimously. Moving on to the second item of business, Counselor Teason.
Second, second and a half, I would move that bylaw C-1422C, the Boards and Committees Bylaw Amendments. And with that, I would move that council give first reading to bylaw C-1422C, being an amendment to the Boards and Committees Bylaw. Just speaking to this, the proposed amendments are for the appointment of public members on the Youth Advisory Council. And this is due to, as spoken about at the previous council meeting, an increased interest from our youth, so this will up the number of board members to 18. And a few editorial adjustments were made to provide clarity, largely around the youth section, so we have a public member and then youth member. So there's a distinction between that, so that we ensure that we have youth members appointed to youth council, and public members appointed to all others. And also, public was removed throughout several sections of member appointment with the definition for member as well, so. Just a little bit of housekeeping items, but wanting to keep you all in the loop.
Thanks for that. So that motion is in order, first reading on the bylaw amendment. Call the question.
Counselor Bergen, favor.
And that carries unanimously. Counselor Teason.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I move that council give second reading to bylaw C-1422C, an amendment to the Boards and Committees Bylaw.
Opportunity for discussion or debate. Seeing no one, call the question.
Counselor Bergen, favor.
That carries unanimously. Thank you for that. Counselor Teason.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I move that we have third reading at this meeting.
Opportunity for discussion or debate. This also must pass unanimously in order for us to have third reading here tonight. Seeing none, I'll call the question.
Counselor Bergen, favor.
Carries unanimously. Counselor Teason.
Thank you again, Mayor Clayton. I move that council give third reading to bylaw C-1422C, an amendment to the Boards and Committees Bylaw.
Seeing no one in the queue, call the question.
Counselor Bergen, favor.
All right, that carries unanimously. Moving on, any highlights from your meeting, Counselor Teason?
Yeah, my committee meetings was a good meetings day, good news meetings day, that is. From our city clerks area, board and committee public member recruitment had closed last week, or has closed prior to, we received the update last week. Today, we will go through that on item 8.3, to see which of those members got appointed to different committees around the city. In corporate communications, December marks free initiatives for accessible transit riders, and the Grand Northwest, or Grand North Winter Festival sponsorship opportunities as well. So if you want to be involved, I know the second time it's come up in this committee meeting, it's a wonderful, brand-new festival hosted by the city here in Grand Prairie. Any sponsors who are out there, by all means, it's a worthwhile contribution to community spirit. We also hosted council's interfaith breakfast set up by administration. Thank you to all administration and council who were in attendance. And finally, in corporate marketing, communications, recreation, and culture, social media pages are having a positive increase overall in comparison to last year, with a 77% increase in impressions, and a 32% increase in engagements, and a 2,455% increase in video views. So thank you very much to our corporate marketing, audiovisual teams out there. I know part of, part of how we advertise ourselves, and promote ourselves, and market ourselves in the community, really goes through these wonderful people in our city, so we couldn't look as good without your expertise. And with that, that is business. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Counselor Teason. I'm going to jump a committee, as Counselor O'Connor has left the chambers. We're going to go to 7.6, the Operational Services Committee meeting, and I'm going to turn that one over to Counselor Teason again.
Here I go again, on my own. I move that council adopt the minutes of the Operational Services Committee meeting held December 5th as presented.
That motion is in order? Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question.
Counselor Bergen, favor.
And that carries unanimously. Counselor Teason, one item of business tonight?
You betcha. With that item of business, I would move that council, or sorry, council receive the transportation study regarding the city and the county, report for information.
All right, that motion is in order. I'll call the question.
Counselor Bergen, favor.
And that carries unanimously. Any highlights from your meeting, Counselor Teason?
You know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go off of memory here, because what the public doesn't know is we got a 609-page document that now I gotta scroll through to get there, it's about 200, just to get to my report. I'm not quite there yet. But besides the transportation study, we also had reports on transit, engineering, and parks and the environment. We're still doing tree pruning at this time of year, which is incredible, as well as pothole filling, and road maintenance will continue as long as, as the snow stays off the road. We've also removed some of our select concrete kiosks from the Muska CP Park corridor, and gravel road and ditch maintenance is ongoing as well. And that is all.
Thanks for that, Counselor Teason. Moving back to the Public and Protective Services Committee meeting, Counselor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. My apologies. I'd like to move council adopt the minutes of the Public and Protective Services meeting held December 5th as presented.
That motion is in order? I'll call the question.
Counselor Bergen, favor.
And that carries unanimously. Counselor O'Connor, you had one item of business?
It's my favorite one of all. Okay, I'd like to move that council give first reading to bylaw C-1310A, if I can see that number properly, new glasses next week, being an amendment to the Parkland Bylaw.
That motion is in order? I'll call the question.
Counselor Bergen, favor. Bressi in favor.
I didn't get a chance to say that I was going to speak to it, so this motion is...
Just let me, just wait. Thanks. That carries eight to one. Counselor O'Connor. Your next motion, and then you can speak to it.
Okay, thank you. Council give second reading to bylaw C-1310A. And in speaking to this, it's important that bylaw has investigated and putting in the rules in place, so they have teeth to be able to enforce e-scooters and e-bikes in the parks, and with it, there are a number of rules that people have to follow. And I'm hoping that everyone will support this motion.
Thank you. That motion is in order, an opportunity for discussion or debate, recognizing Counselor Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I wanted to raise just a point that a lot of people, including me in some ways, don't understand, is that this refers to parks, byways, and pathways only, not to sidewalks or roadways, which are men, which are under the jurisdiction of the province, and the province doesn't recognize e-transportation on their byways at this time. However, council continues to lobby to have that changed.
Thanks for those comments, Counselor Teason.
Yeah, thank you. I think Counselor Bressi noticed, I was a no on this one, not because of the hard work our administration's gone into. They've been working, I think, for about a year and a half on trying to put something together in rules and guidelines. My note though on this, though, is based on the fact that it's good to have rules, but if you can't enforce the rules, then why have, why have those rules? And I know we try to enforce what we can, but once you get on the trail system, it becomes very, very hard unless you're a bike officer with bylaw enforcement riding on the trails, and you just happen to see it. A lot of these will happen only upon incident of something happening, and as we discussed at committee, e-bikes can, in some cases, the very rare ones, can get up to 70 miles per hour, which is actually quite fast. But most of them go about 28 to 30 kilometer, or miles per hour, which is in that 50 to 60 kilometer an hour zone, which could cause death on impact. So I think what our role is in this bylaw, and to maybe help out our administration, is to continue advocacy with our, with our province, and ensure that they fit it into their transportation act, so that we can act accordingly. So I'm going to continue to be a no vote on this, not a knock on our administration's hard work on trying to put this together. It's difficult, especially when you're working against other laws that conspire against you in a way, and you're building a plane as you're driving it, or the electric bike as we're talking here. So I'm a no.
Counselor Berg.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. I'm going to be in support. And I, Counselor Teason actually touched on it. The reason I'm in support of it is because we do have bike patrols, we do have walking patrols, and I want these officers to have the power to do something if there is some recklessness, or some speed, or there's some issues. So again, I'm the last guy, and I've said it before, I don't want to put in bylaws that we can't enforce, but I actually think we have an opportunity to enforce this, maybe not on a full patrol, but on a partial patrol. So I'm going to be in support of this.
Counselor Bosch.
Thank you. I will be in support of this motion. You know, it's an accountability piece, and if it only happens that there's that accountability piece after an incident, then so be it. Then there'll be at least accountability to something that has happened potentially as an outcome of what Counselor Teason said already. So it's a good start, and I'd like to see it, you know, get more teeth in the future, that accountability piece. You have speeds and controls and everything else, so this is no different.
Counselor Bressi.
Great, thank you. I'm really confused by comments that we can't enforce this. There's nothing in this bylaw that can't, that we can't actually write a ticket for, and that I think actually would have a reasonable chance of, chance of conviction, so I'm confused by those. And can we make sure that everybody's following this bylaw at all times? On the trails, no, absolutely not, but there's not a single law in the city that we can stop, that we can enforce at all times everywhere. I really wish that we could stop my bicycle from getting stolen every couple of years. We can't seem to do that. I don't think anybody's saying, hey, it should suddenly be legal to steal bicycles now in the city. So this really is asking people to operate with reasonable amount of care, asking people to say when they're, to make an audible warning when they're passing somebody, asking people to have a light if they're between dusk and dawn, asking people to not carry a passenger unless their vehicle's designed for it. We shouldn't just be asking people to do that, we should be demanding people do that, and we should be giving consequences at times when they're not following those pretty common sense safety rules. I shared a committee that when I was much younger, and a little bit dumber than I am now, I got a ticket as a, as a kid from a city Calgary bylaw officer because I was going way too fast, and it changed my behavior. And you people on Calgary trails still go way too fast sometimes? Absolutely, I'm sure they do. But at least for me, that ticket changed my behavior. So let's give our people the ability to do some enforcement when they see issues on the trails by passing this.
All right. I will see if there's, if Counselor O'Connor would like to, nope, that's not where we are. That was all the discussion in the queue for second reading. I'll call the question.
Counselor Bergen, favor. Bressi in favor.
And that carries eight to one. Counselor O'Connor.
Yes, I'd like to move that council have third reading of bylaw 1310A at this meeting.
All right, that motion is in order. In order for us to have third reading here tonight, this must carry unanimously. Call the question.
Counselor Bergen, favor.
Please vote, Counselor Teason. That carries unanimously. Counselor O'Connor.
Yes, I'd like to, council give the third reading to bylaw C-1310A, being an amendment to the Parkland Bylaw.
That motion is in order, opportunity for discussion or debate on third reading, seeing none, call the question.
Counselor Bergen, favor.
That carries eight to one. Counselor O'Connor, highlights from your meeting.
My list is a little long, so I apologize ahead of time. I'll try and cut it down as much as I can.
Highlights is great.
Community and social development, an additional $55,000 was received from the Tamarack Institute, which will be earmarked partially for bus subsidies for schools to attend... attend the Youth Career Discovery Expo in March. Also nominations for ticket sales opened December 1st for the Passionate Hearts event, approximately 340 residents attended the "Opioids Don't Discriminate" exhibit. Under Housing and Homelessness Initiatives, the Coordinated Care Campus Renaming Subcommittee held its first meeting, and the Federal Representative for Federable Reaching Home Funding met with administration and is excited with activities and initiatives undertaken. Under Enforcement Services, administration will implement no loitering signage across the Community Knowledge Campus in response to concern raised along with a thorough investigation of these concerns and engagements with stakeholders associated with the Community Knowledge Campus. The primary person purpose of these signs is to deter gatherings and undesirable activities in the campus parking lots, with emphasis on educating potential violators. The Fire Department, this year Grand Prairie Firefighters Charitable Foundation donated $10,000 to schools for the daily support of students with breakfast and snacks. This foundation is a charity run by the city firefighters who are passionate about making Grand Prairie a better place to live, with 100% of the money raised going to families and individuals in need in the Grand Prairie area. RCMP, the final town hall meeting took place, and November 30th and the virtual online survey engagement has been well received, and residents have provided valuable feedback. The Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Advisory Committee had the first meeting last month and plan to be active in the community throughout 2024. Mobile Outreach Program, administration received federal funding from the Public Safety Canada Building Safer Communities Fund for prevention and outreach programming to address youth risk factors associated to gun and gang involvement. The Community Knowledge Campus, the Coming Together Christmas Campaign kickoff was a huge success. The combined forces of the two Patterson Midian radio stations will support several nonprofit agents, agencies to help make Christmas a little brighter for these less fortunate. This campaign replaces the former stuff-a-bus and the big toy box donation drives. So donations can be dropped off at the East Link Center until December 10th, and, well, let's get that. And then Sports Development, Wellness, and Culture, in collaboration with the Grand Prairie Regional Association of Volunteer Organization, the George Repka Outstanding Achievement Award was awarded to Beth Goldie.
All right, thanks for your...
Yeah, one more, sorry, got ahead of myself, and the Bilbo, you gotta love them, and the Bilbo's Organization of the Year Award was awarded to the Grand Prairie Friendship Center, and the Lace Them Up as Interactive Sports History exhibit currently at the Grand Prairie Museum. The Public Engagement Program for Proposed Recreational Facility occurred during the week of November 20th, and that's all I have for so far. Thank you.
Thanks for your highlights, I'll move on to under reports tonight, we have a few reports. First, item 8.1, the Recreation and Culture Strategy. I will turn this over to Ms. Casualy for introduction, and then look to business that may be arising from council.
The Recreation and Culture Strategy was developed to ensure the provision of high-quality recreation and culture programs, services, and infrastructure within our community. Additionally, it offers a roadmap and operational framework that identifies priorities for the next several years. Through research and engagement, five overarching themes emerged directing the strategy's development. Additionally, four major initiatives termed as big plays have been identified to further enhance recreation and culture offerings aligning with council's strategic priorities. Revisions to the strategy included the integration of the city's land acknowledgement, updates to statistical and historical event data, and the inclusion of facility utilization details. Administration has pursued various action items outlined in the strategy and are committed to its ongoing implementation in the coming years. It is administration's recommendation that council adopt the Recreation and Culture Strategy as presented.
All right, thanks for that introduction, recognizing Councilor O'Connor.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Casualy. I would like to recommend that we pass this back to the committee, as there are, I found a number of, some errors in the report, and I think they should be corrected before we make it public.
I don't, I think that possibly what you mean, Councilor O'Connor, is there's some questions you have that are probably better discussed at standing committee than...
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, I think I would like to see it go back to standing committee, thank you.
So Councilor O'Connor has some concerns about some of the content in the report in his motion, therefore is sending it back to standing committee for further discussion. All right, discussion or debate on Councilor O'Connor's motion. Seeing none, I'll call the question.
Councilor Berg in favor.
Thank you, Ms. Casualy. Moving on to item 8.2, the transfer of land to Métis Local 1990, I am just looking for, my apologies, one second. I will turn this over to Ms. Hughes for introduction, and once you get situated, if you could introduce your guests, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. With me I have the President of Métis Local 1990, Shannon Dunfield. The report before you is a request for a land transfer to Métis Local 1990. Over the past 20 years, Métis Local 1990 has leased the land from the city of Grand Prairie, located at 970299th Ave. The building situated on the land is fully owned by the Métis Local 1990 and is the home to the elders' caring shelter, which provides 17 affordable housing options with wraparound services to seniors in our community. Ownership of both the land and the building would provide Métis Local 1990 with the ability to ensure further program stability and sustainability, support advocacy, and possible future expansion. If supported, the transfer would be in alignment with council's strategic priority of an inclusive caring community in housing by ensuring local agencies can provide suitable housing options for community members who have experienced or are at risk of homelessness. Therefore, administration recommends that council direct administration to enter into negotiations with Métis Local 1990 about a proposed land transfer agreement with terms and conditions that are satisfactory to the city solicitor and city manager. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Opportunity for questions, Council Bressi.
Great, thank you. It doesn't really impact things for me, but I'm just kinda curious about just changes with Métis Nation and locals, so there's still Métis Local, it's obviously still a corporate entity, is this staying with Métis Local, and that's gonna stay as society for the foreseeable future, or will this eventually be transferred into ownership under Métis Nation?
Thanks, did I turn it on? Yes, I did.
Yeah, just pull it just a smidge closer, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the question, Council Bressi. The transition is still going to be taking place, it's not gonna happen immediately, it'll probably happen in the next couple, I would say probably in the new year, so when we transition over from a local into a district, it will still stay within the Grand Prairie area.
But it'll be...
It'll be under the Grand Prairie Métis District.
Great, thank you, no, I appreciated that, for me, that's actually another reason to approve this, is I know that there's a lot to figure out when we're, when you're making the big change that the Métis Nation is doing, and I'm excited to see those changes, and I think one more thing that we need to add to the list of all those things that need to happen is figuring out how to transfer a lease from the city to the district or to the nation when that goes on, so thank you for that information.
Council Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would like to make a motion and then speak to it.
Sure.
I would move that council direct administration to enter negotiations with Métis Local 1990 about a proposed land transfer agreement with terms and conditions satisfactory to the city solicitor and the city manager. And in speaking to that, I wanted to transfer this land to Métis Local 1990 in 2003 when the building was being built. I feel, as I've said many times at this table, that when we retain ownership of the land and a nonprofit organization builds a building on it, we are hamstringing their future, and so I think that this is time to give them full authority over their building and to be able to use it to finance future endeavors, so I would ask you all to support this motion.
All right, that motion is in order, and I see no one in the queue with questions or discussion or debate, so I'll call the question, please vote.
Councilor Berg in favor.
Bressi in favor.
And that carries unanimously. Thank you, ladies. I am now going to move on to item 8.3, I just wanna check with our Legislative Services Clerk to make sure that we are ready to go on that. Yep, okay, we're ready to go, moving on to item 8.3, recognizing Councilor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd like to move that council support Alan Ingram, Cameron Donald, Christina Webb to the Assessment Review Board for a three-year term each, ending December 31st, 2026.
All right, thank you for that, that motion is in order, seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question.
Councilor Berg in favor.
And that carries unanimously. I'm gonna go around the table on a few of these, Councilor Berg. Councilor Palat, sorry.
I was just about to give you mine. I make a motion that council appoint Josh Anderson, Mickey DeGroot, Ricky Goh, Nicole Lavoie, Jane Manning, Casey McLean, and Ola Repitita to the Community Advisory Committee for a three-year term ending December 31st, 2026.
Just give me one second here, I wanna check the notes. Okay, perfect, thank you for that, that motion is in order, call the question.
Counselor Berg in favor.
And that carries unanimously. Councilor Berg.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton, and thanks to Councilor O'Connor for letting me his e-scribe. I would like to move the council appoint Wayne Drysdale to the Complaint Adjudication Committee for a three-year term each, ending December 31st, 2026.
That motion is in order? Seeing no one in, sorry, Councilor Teason, I'm thinking you're probably in the queue to do next, thank you. I'll call the question on that one.
Counselor Berg in favor.
That one carries unanimously, I'm moving on to item number four, Councilor Teason.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton, I'd move that council appoint Kenton Dewick, Jane Mannings, Shane Mudrick, and Tab Pollock to the Council Remuneration Review Committee for terms ending December 31st, 2024.
Counselor Berg in favor.
Just, council, I'm looking for a motion to postpone the discussion on the other items, as in your e-scribe, we're having a little bit of a technical difficulty, and so I'm hoping somebody, council, sorry, first on that motion, that carries eight to one, and I'll recognize Council Bressi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton, I would move that council postpone additional discussion on this topic until, where in the meeting would you like?
It'll go, it'll go as item 16.
As item 16.
Sorry, 15.2 is unfinished business.
Sure.
All right, so that motion is in order, we're just gonna postpone the other items until the evening session today, and they'll be listed as item 15.2. So we're now going to go, move on in our agenda, there's no correspondence, there was one delegation this evening, and I'll recognize Councilor O'Toole. Oh, sorry, I apologize, we're gonna vote on that motion first, we're gonna vote on Councilor Bressi's motion first, and I'm thinking, Councilor O'Toole, you're for the next item, correct? All right, so I'll call the question on the motion to postpone the remainder of these items till later this evening, is item 15.2, call the question, please vote.
Counselor Berg in favor.
And that carries unanimously. Now we will move on to our agenda as presented, there's no correspondence this evening, and we did have one delegation, recognizing Councilor O'Toole.
I just moved this, information.
Councilor O'Toole moves to accept, see delegation's presentation for information.
Yes, thank you.
No worries, comments or questions, seeing no one in the queue, I will call the question.
Counselor Berg in favor.
And that carries unanimously. There are no notices of motion, and now we'll take our recess, we will be back at 6 o'clock, see you then, thank you. And that carries unanimously. There are no notices of motion, and now we'll take our recess. We will be back at six o'clock. See you then. Thank you.
Good evening and welcome back to the City Council Meeting of December 11, 2023. We are now in the evening session of our meeting. And on our agenda, first is normally delegations. If you're interested in being a delegation, there is a form online. You can choose the 3:00 PM session. And as in nights like tonight, when we're having an evening session, you are welcome to join us. But we just ask you fill out the form ahead of time. Let us know that you're coming. So we'll move right into item 14 on our agenda. We have two public hearings tonight. The first one being a land use bylaw amendment. And I will call this to order. It's Land Use Bylaw Amendment C-1260-175. And I will look to an introduction, look for an introduction, turn it over to Mr. Johnson and Mr. Babalola. There you go.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'm here to introduce bylaw C-1260-175, which deals with various development regulations for the medium-density residential district. By way of background, on March 28, 2023, the Invest GP... something...
If you're watching online, if you could just give us a moment? Just having some visual technology delays on the presentation. We'll be right with you.
My apologies.
No worries.
All right, so continuing on. At the March 28, 2023 Invest GP Committee, the committee passed a motion for administration to review development regulations as it relates to building height for multi-attached developments in the medium-density residential district. Around the time that the motion was made, administration had identified a few other matters in the RM district that warranted attention. And so this amendment covers both the building height matter as well as side yard setback. The current RM district limits the building height for multi-attached developments to two stories while apartments are allowed to be four stories. The proposed amendment will increase the building height for multi-attached to four stories to match that of apartments. As noted, administration had identified some side yard setback issues. The current side yard setback is shown in the table above. Administration is proposing to keep those side yard setbacks relatively the same when the development abuts, say, a commercial district, an industrial district, a roadway, PUL, lane, etc. However, if it immediately abuts low-density residential development, we propose an increased side yard setback that would be more similar to a rear yard setback. The next slide shows that proposal. On the left side, as you can see, the four-story apartment building could be four meters from the side yard property line when it abuts all other development types. However, in the right side scenario where it immediately abuts residential development, it's proposed to be 7.6 meters. And one final note, we made another adjustment to the district, and that's just clarifying some of the mixed-use development opportunities. It doesn't make a material change to the district, it's just reworded for clarification. That's a summary of the amendments being presented this evening. It is recommended that council give all three readings to the bylaw, and we are open to any questions.
Perfect. Thank you for that introduction. Now, open it up for questions for administration, recognizing Councilor Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Mr. Johnson, I fully support three-story townhouses, and I understand the logic there. But I don't really understand why we continue to restrict apartment buildings to four stories. Can you tell me why? And I realize it's just in this one designation of residents, but can you explain why we're not moving ahead, kind of in step with the rest of the world, to build taller buildings?
Mr. Johnson?
Through the mayor, thank you. There is, as you noted, there is another land use district that allows for apartment buildings up to 12 stories. However, anytime you apply a land use district to lands at the time of development, then you have to prove that there's the servicing capacity for that. So if the developer or landowner intends to build four stories, then they have less servicing requirements than if they were to provide a district that, say, allowed eight stories. So it's primarily the choice of the developer of the area if they want to use the RM or RH district. We do have some examples of the RH district in the city. And then in the instance where a developer may wish to pursue additional stories, then we have other means to accommodate those proposals, primarily either through variances or direct control.
Okay. So the RM district is typically fairly close to residential, regular residential, correct? Is that why we're keeping it at four stories? Because that's the servicing that we are sending to those neighborhoods?
Through the mayor. Certainly is a multi-unit residential district that can be fairly easily integrated into neighborhoods. The examples that I can think of for RH development or high-density residential development are typically located closer to commercial or in other areas where impact on adjacent properties would be minimized. So RM, I would say, is the most compatible for new neighborhoods.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Bressi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. So I do have a bit of concern about the larger setback. Am I understanding right, the district, that if that can be gotten around with the new development, if they don't do windows, balconies, anything like that on that wall facing those houses?
Through the mayor. The reason we put that clause in is if the apartment is turned so that the balconies and the windows from the units faced away from the residential district, then the side yard setback could be reduced. That's primarily to preserve options for infill development, where there may be some lot consolidation. And so a smaller side yard setback may make sense. What we wanted to avoid, and thus the proposed increased side yard setbacks, is instances where if the existing development regulations remain, you can be as little as three meters from the rear fence of low-density residential development and have four stories with balconies just looking straight into the adjacent properties. So we tried to make it such that in instances where there are lots backing on, then there's a larger development setback. And then in instances where there's any other form of development, or like I said, even a public utility lot or a municipal reserve, then the side yard can be reduced.
And even on that infill, if I'm understanding it right, there's opportunity to get around that setback if you design it such a way that you don't have balconies or windows facing those houses?
Through the mayor, that's correct. Thank you.
Councilor Berg.
Yeah, thanks. And actually, my questions are somewhat on the same topic. So I love the idea of the four stories. If I was a neighbor, I'd love the idea of 7.6 meters. But I've always imagined these would be ideal for infill, and you kind of touched on it. At 7.6 meters, is that practical on a single lot somewhere in the radius of the downtown core, ideal for infill? Or would they have to consolidate lots?
Through the mayor. In instances of infill, it's likely that the building would be oriented such that the balconies would be facing the street or the rear yard, and the side yard would therefore be able to be reduced to, similar to what the side yard setback provisions are today.
So in theory, then, the 7.6 meters is for privacy, not for protecting necessarily neighboring sun?
Through the mayor, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. My concern is also, that's almost 25 feet. So that makes it pretty tough on an infill type. I'm just wondering how that can work if you're consolidating a number of yards or lots. That might work in that instance, but it makes it a little problematic because it's half of a lot.
Mr. Johnson?
Through the mayor. We're quite confident that the 7.6 meters will not apply in infill. In infill, the apartment building is likely to be oriented so the balconies will be facing the street or the rear lane, and therefore the reduced side yard setback will apply. The 7.6 side yard for four stories is more for the larger intentionally planned medium-density residential districts in newer neighborhoods.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so I see no one else in the queue with questions arising for administration. So I'm going to now ask, hang on. Going to move to the delegation portion and submission portion of our public hearing. I will ask if there's anyone here or online to speak up now, anyone in support, rather, of this bylaw amendment. I will ask a second time if there's anyone here to speak in support of this bylaw amendment, to either online or in person, to come forward now. And a third time to see if there's anyone here to speak in support of this bylaw amendment. Seeing none, I'll ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition of the bylaw amendment to C-1260-175. And seeing if there's anyone online or in person for the second time to come forward to speak in opposition of this amendment. And a third time to see if there's anyone here to speak in opposition of the land use bylaw amendment C-1260-175. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and look to Councilor Bressi for business arising.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move the council to give first reading to bylaw C-1260-175, being amendment to the land use bylaw.
That motion is in order. I will call the question. Sorry, there is an opportunity for discussion or debate on that. Seeing none, I will call the question. And that's carried unanimously. Thank you. Now we'll move on to item 14.2, which is land use bylaw amendment C-1260-177.
Are we not doing all three readings?
I apologize, we are. Continue, Councilor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd move that council give readings by law C-1260-175. Just to speak to this, right now, housing is probably the single biggest need in our community right now. It's, there's a lot of people that are struggling to find a place that fits for their family and they can afford, and there's a lot of businesses that are really struggling to get the workers they need here because there's not housing available for those workers. I really think that we should be looking at what sense goal regulations that we can change or reduce that will make it easy to build housing without fundamentally changing the character of a six-story neighborhood in undesirable ways. This really is just a common sense amendment to our land use bylaw that will allow, buildings go as high as they already can go, it's just allowing different forms of buildings to go high. So I really think that this is something council should be approving today to help address one of the biggest needs in our community.
Perfect. So thank you for that. That motion for second reading is in order. Opportunity for discussion or debate. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Councilor Bressi.
And Mayor Clayton, I'd move the council to have third reading of bylaw C-1260-175 at this meeting.
Thank you for that. In order for this, for third reading to happen here today, this must pass unanimously. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. That carries unanimously. Council Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move the council give third reading to bylaw C-1260-175, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
That motion is in order. Call the question. And that carries unanimously. Now we will move on to item 14.2, which is land use bylaw amendment 12-C-1260-177. And I will turn this over to Ms. Downing and Mr. Johnson for introduction. Sorry, I apologize. First, I'll call it to order, then I'll give you a second to set up and look to administration for introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton.
Thanks for coming.
Administration has initiated an amendment to the land use bylaw to incorporate lands in the rural service area into the city's land use bylaw. The rural service area is the land that the city annexed from the county in 2016. In order to ensure the landowners would retain the same development rights they had well in the county, administration created new land use districts and regulations that mirrored the county's land use districts. The rezoning is being done in a phased approach. The second phase is presented here tonight. This phase involves 223 properties on the west side of the city. The rezoning will create a less complicated regulatory framework, preserve development rights, and facilitate future development in the city. This bylaw also includes a minor amendment aimed at maintaining the current standards for keeping animals that the county land use districts had with the property's existing regulations under the county bylaw. Significant landowner engagement has been undertaken. This included a dedicated engagement site, notification letters specifically outlining the zoning, rezoning specific to each property, and the notice of the public hearing. A few residents have called with questions, however, no concerns have been raised to administration. The proposed amendment rezones properties on the west side of the city. The rezoning will not impact landowners' development rates or property taxes. Administration recommends that council give three readings to bylaw C-1260-177.
All right, thank you for your presentation and open it up to council for questions of administration. Council Berg?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. The only thing that I really have is, under the risk, again, it wasn't anything too heavy or onerous, but there was a lot of items mentioned under risk, mainly around complexity. And at the end of it, you say you're willing to work with, with the landowners should any conditions arise. Just kind of curious, at a high level, where do you see those risks coming from? Is it overlap? Just help me understand a little bit of the complexity.
Ms. Downing?
Thank you. So the issue is that we had to recreate the county's land use bylaw as closely as we could without adding the entire land use bylaw. So one of their definitions may differ slightly from ours, and we did our best to make sure that if it was a like definition, it exists in our bylaw with a like definition. And so there may be an instance where somebody wants to do something that isn't described exactly the same way in the county land use bylaw as it is in ours. And as we are committed to allowing them to have the same development rights, we will work within that to ensure that if they were able to do that in the county, we will make sure that they'll be able to do it in the city. And also, every time we administer this new bylaw, we might notice a little nuance that doesn't make sense, and every time I've come back, there's been a little fix. That, you know, one of the development officers has said, this isn't, this doesn't make, this isn't clear to me, can we fix this? So there's a few amendments in here, for example. And anytime we notice that, we'll be back to council with amendments.
Okay, thanks, I appreciate the reassurance.
All right, I see no one else in the queue with questions for administration. So I will now go to the presentation and submission portion of our public hearing. I will ask if there's anybody here or online to speak in support of this land use amendment, land use bylaw amendment. I'll ask a second time if there's anyone here or online to speak in support of this land use bylaw amendment. And a third time, anyone here to speak in support of this amendment. Seeing none, I will now ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition of this land use bylaw amendment. And a second time, online or in person, to speak in opposition of this land use bylaw amendment. Please raise your hand or come forward. Come on up. So once you get sat down, sir, please just introduce yourself for those who are watching.
My name is Aaron Holla.
Welcome.
The country owns RV Park, is our main business, my brother Jason, myself. The one question I had, and I'm sorry, I'm not very up to speed on what's going on, but apart with the animals, I'm not certain what's being presented as far as the amendment or the bylaws or bylaw.
Okay. So, so your questions are in particular in regards to the animals and any changes in the bylaw. Can I turn that over to you, Chief Klavan, or ask Mr. Johnson maybe to take a seat beside you, or Ms. Downing, and address those questions?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I think Ms. Downing would be able to address them.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. So the issue is that the county has multiple country residential districts, CR5 and CR4. And I know your property is, I think you have one that's a CR5 and then a bigger parcel. So the CR5 properties allow up to 20 animal units, and those are country residential properties that might be in the corner of a quarter section on their own. CR4 in the county is subdivisions, and those subdivisions have less animal requirement, allowed two horses, for example. So we wrote a line into the bylaw that states that if your property, for the use agriculture pursuit major, is not allowed on properties within multi-lot subdivisions with four or more lots.
Right, so that, that would actually affect.
Do you have a subdivision? Like a named subdivision?
Yes.
Okay.
I wouldn't say there's a name to it, but there's definitely some subdivision.
No, it certainly wouldn't apply to yours.
It wouldn't apply.
It wouldn't apply.
Because it's four or more, you said, right, Ms. Downing? So if yours is three lots?
I believe so, yes. Yeah, there's a fourth lot that we also own, but that's, I don't believe that was part of the subdivision.
Okay, okay. Any other questions, sir?
No, but on another note, I just want to say thank you to council and to the city. We've lived in that property for years and years, and you guys did the work this fall, as you know, on Range Road 64. Good job.
Awesome.
It looked good. The contractor was really good, and I know you guys don't get a lot of praise, so I actually, that's what I came here for.
Thank you for coming. Thank you. All right. Thank you for coming tonight, appreciate that. Yeah, not a problem. Okay, so still in our public hearing, I will ask a third time if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to the land use bylaw amendment. Seeing no one online and no one else raising their hand, I will close the public hearing, look to business arising. Council Blackmore?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move council give first reading to bylaw C-1260-177, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
So, no discussion or debate on first reading. I will call the question. Council Plott, how do you vote?
In favor.
Council Plott in favor. And that carries unanimously. Councilor Blackmore?
I would move council give second reading to bylaw C-1260-177. And in speaking to this, I think it's important that our land use bylaw be unified across all city lands, and this is a step in that direction. So I would ask you to support the motion.
Great, thank you for that. So this is second reading, opportunity for discussion or debate or questions for administration. Actually, I'll take that back. No questions for administration, just discussion and debate on the motion. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question on second reading, please vote. And that too carries unanimously. Councilor Blackmore?
I would move that council have third reading of bylaw 1260-177 at this meeting.
So that's a motion in order for us to have third reading here tonight. This must pass unanimously. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question, please vote. And that carries unanimously. Councilor Blackmore?
And I would move third reading of bylaw 1260-177, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Perfect, thank you for that motion, Council Blackmore. Seeing no one in the queue, call the question on third reading. And that carries unanimously. So that deals with both of our public hearings tonight. We'll now move to unfinished business. First item, 15.1, bylaw C-1467, Electrical Distribution System Franchise Agreement. And this is, this is second and third reading. We had first reading on October 30th, and I will look to council for business arising. Councilor O'Connor?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd like to ask council give second reading to bylaw C-1467, being the Electric Distribution System Franchise Agreement.
Perfect, so that motion is in order. Opportunity for discussion or debate on second reading. Seeing none, I'll call the question, please vote. That carries unanimously. Councilor O'Connor?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd like to move that council give third reading to bylaw C-1467, being the Electric Distribution System Franchise Agreement.
Thank you for that, that motion's in order. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. That carries unanimously. Moving on to item 15.2, continuation of our public member appointments. And I will go to start with Council Teason. Okay, Council Bressi?
I was going to be outraged if I lost my turn in the queue from before, so thank you, Mayor Clayton. I move the council appoint Cindy Park to the Economic Development Strategic Planning and Advisory Committee for a three-year term ending December 31st, 2026.
That motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue, call the question. That carries unanimously. Councilor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I move the council appoint John Anderson as the Chamber of Commerce Representative for the Economic Development Strategic Planning and Advisory Commission, Committee, for a one-year term ending December 31st, 2024.
Recognizing Council Teason. Oh, okay. I'll get back to you. That motion is in order. Council O'Connor, you're still in the queue, but is that from previous? I'll pick when who goes, so I'm just. All right, seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. Councilor Bosch?
See, I'm not even overzealous like these others do, holy man. I move that council appoint Derek Casey, Clint Osborne, and Terry Sudnick to the Grand Prairie Airport Commission for a three-year term, each ending December 31st, 2026. And congratulations.
I'll call the question. That carries unanimously. Well, now moved to Councilor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd like to move council appoint Darren Francis, Lisa Kirkoff, Dan Lamu, and Sean Zeitz to the Grand Prairie Public Library Board for a three-year term, each ending December 31st, 2026.
That motion is in order, thank you for that. That carries unanimously. Go into Council Teason next, please.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I'd move that council appoint Chad Boone, Linda Murphy, and Elmer Spilchin to the subdivision and development appeal board for a three-year term, each ending December 31st, 2026.
Great, I'll call the question. That carries unanimously. Moving on to Councilor Berg?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would like to move the council appoint Blake Parker, E.J. Iago, Maryam Nazandah, and Tarendit Namsoth to the Youth Advisory Council for a one-year term each.
All right, thank you for that motion. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Moving along, Councilor Plott?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I'd make a motion that council appoint Linda Murphy as the Chair of the Assessment Review Board for 2024.
Thank you for that, that motion is in order. Call the question, please vote. And that carries unanimously. Moving along, Councilor Blackmore?
I move council appoint Lynn Coulter as the Chair of the Subdivision and Development Appeal Board for the year of 2024.
Thank you for that. Maybe for the next one, I'll just get you to step out for once, that carries unanimously. Thank you, but Council Blackmore? And I'll go to Council Teason for the next one.
Yes, I really wanted to make this motion, in fact, more so than the youth council one. So I would move that council appoint Councilor Blackmore as interim Chair of the Grand Prairie Airport Commission until their annual general meeting.
Yeah, I just, I'm just looking to Legislative Services Manager. I don't think the word interim is required. She is the chair until the AGM. So if we could just have that word interim removed?
I will accept that amendment.
Thank you, Council Teason. Seeing no one else in the queue, I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. And that is all of our public member appointments for tonight. We will wait for Council Blackmore to get settled in and move on. There is no delegation business, and we'll move into council member reports, and we're going to start with Council Bosch. I know, right?
Dodged it. An early morning for the Interfaith Breakfast. Several of us attended. That was at 7:00 AM. I don't know, that is, that is hard. But there was probably about 60, 70 people there. It was a great, a great breakfast and fantastic speakers. I also attended the Aquatera Year End Event, the Jeff Dunham Event, which was actually super fun. He was great. I did attend the Chamber Mixer in Sexsmith. Sexsmith is now part of the Grand Prairie Chamber of Commerce, and so everybody's super happy to have them participate with us and vice versa. Next was International Day with Persons with Disabilities, and again, several, several of us were there. The City Christmas Party, most of us attended for a short time so that we could give our greetings and then let everybody have a good time after that. Leaders of Tomorrow and Volunteer Awards Breakfast, that was another 7:00 AM. Holy moly, those are hard on me. And then, next was the Sandman Christmas Mixer here in the core. I was part of the Grand Prairie Regional Rec Committee discussing the new initiatives, both here in the city and potentially in, in the county. And of course, the Recreation and Cultural Strategy is a big part of what's, what's happening. what's happening in and around. Also, the Chamber of Commerce AGM. Congratulations to Cord Spiro, the new Chair, and past Chair Cindy Park, and thank you for all the work that she had done. So that's a few of the things going on in the last couple of weeks.
I knew you were coming to me. Okay. Thank you. Attended some of the events already mentioned. The mayor and I attended Holy Cross School for over 50 children for grade six and gave them an update on municipal government, and they had lots of questions and interaction. And City of Grand Prairie Christmas Party. I really enjoyed the party this year. Not that I didn't last year, but this one, I was able to sit beside people and they had different games going on, and it was great. So I shared all my winnings, and that's the way it is. Went to the GP Education Society Holiday Greeting, went to the Leaders for Tomorrow event and watched some of the leaders win awards. It was so awesome. And then attended with mayor, I was gonna call her mayor, Counselor Blackmore. Went to Hillside School and met with the grade six kids there, and they are energetic. That's all I can say. Thank you. Merry Christmas, everyone.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I attended the Interfaith Breakfast, and I had no problem getting out of bed that morning. Aqua Terra Year End Dinner, once again, it was great to get together with all the shareholders to talk about business plans and review the future for next year. Attended the Accessibility Advisory Committee, and with that, a big congratulations for International Day of Persons with Disabilities. A huge congratulations to Mika DeGroot, who received the inaugural Margot Bruner Award from the Alberta Premier Council on the Status of Persons with Disabilities. Also, at that event, two Inclusive Community Awards were also given. Congratulations to Root Dental Hygiene, as well as the Grand Prairie Public Library, two amazing organizations that exemplify inclusion. And with that, I also attended the RCMP Town Hall for the city residents, and this was the last RCMP Town Hall for the year, and it was very well attended. And one more big one here, it was the 2025 Special Olympics Summer Games Orientation and Mod boarding. And I was appointed to this board, and we were there for three hours, and it was good information and looking for, looking for the event to take place in 2025. And I did spend a couple of days out of town learning the ins and outs of running an airshow, the International Council of Airshows, and the Rotary Club of Canada, or Grand Prairie, is hosting an airshow July 27th through 28th, 2024, here in Grand Prairie. And I can tell you, there's a lot of acts booked, and I would say, mark your calendar, because it's gonna be very entertaining. And with that, I also finished off the week with MLA and MP Open House, MLA Nolan Dick, MLA Ron Weave, and MP Chris Workington, and that was my roundtable. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I attended the Interfaith Breakfast. Four different groups presented, and just showed us the amazing work that they're doing in our community. So just wanna send a thank you to those four groups, but every community group that is doing wonderful things that we don't always hear about and may not get the spotlight. But thank you. Grand Prairie Regional Tourism Association had its organizational meeting, and that set the stage for 2024, an exciting year of building on our tourism in the region, plus the Aqua Terra Shareholders Supper. I attended that, and then I wound up with a nasty head cold and sinus infection and cleared my calendar entirely, and partly to get better, but also to limit the spread that apparently half the city already has. So didn't want to infect the other half. So had a relatively light week as far as council commitments go while I was recuperating. Thanks, Mayor Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Much to my sadness, I missed a lot of these events too, for the exact same reason as Counselor Berg. But a few things I did get to do was I got to take my next module of my Institute of Corporate Directors training, so really appreciating some of the learnings I bring in there and hope that they can, I can bring them to this table to help us all out. Got to attend my first Infrastructure Committee meeting with Alberta Municipalities, so new portfolio for me. So it's exciting to learn more about, we talked about procurement with the Alberta Construction Association, and so it's interesting to hear their perspective on things. And finally, I got to spend a day doing an intermunicipal development plan and an intermunicipal collaboration committee meeting with Mayor Clayton, Counselor Plott, and members of County Council. And it was really great to be in a room for a day, talking with our biggest partner in the region about how we can work, work together to serve the residents and the businesses that both are very impacted by our municipalities. So really appreciate my colleagues, both from city and the county, who are eager to figure out what's the best path forward for all of our residents.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Attended a few of the events already mentioned. I'm not sure if anybody mentioned the RCMP Town Hall, so I attended that last week at Montreal's Cultural Centre. Want to thank the RCMP for that. There was a lot of good conversation and some side conversations afterwards, which were great for, for me to hear as well. And just to echo Counselor Bressi's, you know, spending an entire day with, with the county and our colleagues over there, I really want to thank our mayor and the Reeve from the county. It's, it's a breath of fresh air to sit in meetings for six hours with our colleagues and have some laughter. And there was actually lots of laughter in that day, and there was some, some tough conversations had too, but breath of fresh air from last term. So thanks to our mayor for that.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Just to start with some business here, on November 29th and 30th, I took part in some of the Community Advisory Board on Housing and Homelessness interviews for new members. A lot of great people putting their name forward for, for that committee. And as far as having a better scope of people, I think we got a good youth representation, also from the mental health world and addictions and stuff. So this is really, really good, as well as some finance people too. So there's no shortage of great people in our community filling in on that committee, and I was happy to take part in those. Also, on December 8th, we had our Grand Spirit Foundation Board Meeting. Part of that was our regular organizational meeting that we do annually. So with that, we re-elected Board Chair Judy Cocatilo Beckeris to be the Chair, and we also re-elected Vice Chair Alvin Huber to the Reeve of Saddle Hills County as well. And then, yeah, we went through all the other committees and nominations, and somehow, some way, I landed on the Friends of the Foundation Committee, the Finance Committee again, and the Building Committee. So we'll see, we'll see how all that goes, but I'm really excited to dig in deep with the Grand Spirit Foundation. Besides that, it was regular business as usual as the board meeting, and not much to update there beyond that. On December 4th, I joined several members of council at the Grand Prairie Educational Society at their Holiday Open House, which is great, getting a real feel of that building. I hadn't been in there in years, and so hearing about the services that they provide, and the care that they, in the rooms that they have for the children, as well as the pantry of food, the Pantry of Plenty, I think they are calling it. It's really, really good to see that those types of services are still there in getting kids, not just to counselors, but showing parents how, you know, maybe they never learned how to be a good parent. Maybe they're following old, old habits from generations before them and how they were raised. But it's a great opportunity for them, not just to get counseling, but to get parenting courses and stuff and improve on the young people that we're sending out into the world here. I was also at the Interfaith Breakfast. It was a great time. The Leaders of Tomorrow, I just wanted to send out a congratulations, because no good deed should go unnoticed. And I know they were noticed there, but it's always nice when council shouts out your name. So to the winners of the Leadership Award, Holly Riegrich and Robert Nelson, congratulations. To the Voluntarism Award, Paulina Kovalynska, a Ukrainian immigrant, actually, that came here, won an award, which is great. And Alyssa Brown, congratulations on that. For advocacy, Riley Martin and Jenna Peterson. For perseverance, Crystal Hepditch and Kenneth Livsey. These are our youth in the community, and they're doing great things. You can go to GI, the Grand Prairie Volunteer Services Bureau website, I think it's grandperrivolunteerism.com, and you can check out what they did to win these awards. What isn't mentioned on that main page, because this is generally geared towards the youth, is we also had our Volunteer of the Year and our Service Organization Volunteer of the Year, and that went to the Grand Prairie Friendship Center, and Len Ogier, who also happens to be the Chair of our Community Advisory Board on Housing and Homelessness, as well as the Chair of the Friendship Center. So congratulations to Len and the Grand Prairie Friendship Center for all the great work that you have done. Finally, you know, I was coming back from a meeting with Asha on December 1st in the evening, and I was between Valley View and Grand Prairie, and then all I saw was purple, green, yellow, blue lights up ahead on the highway. And by the time I got up there, I saw it was a great big service truck that was just wrapped in Christmas lights and a gigantic Christmas tree on top. And it just gave me so much joy. I was overwhelmed. I had to honk my horn going, yeah, this is great. It was kind of blinding at night. The only reason why I mention this is, on Sunday nights and into Monday, I was getting lots of calls from around the community, asking what all the honking's all about, what the convoy's all about. And thanks to Harold Trucking, doing a drive for, for kids and toys, for maybe kids who don't have as much as some other kids, did the Convoy for Kids Toy Drive, and it was a big success, if not a loud success. But from, from all measures that they, that they set out to do, from raising money for the food bank and gathering food and toys for kids and families, I thought it was a great time. And in light of the fact that Grand Prairie no longer has Santa Claus Parade, it was a nice little touch of Christmas cheer going all the way around the perimeter of the city. So thanks for spreading the joy Harold's towing.
I thank you, Mayor Clayton. I attended the Aqua Terra Year End Dinner, where they presented their 2024 business plan. I was also with the Downtown Association Board Meeting. Remind everyone that this is the best time of year to buy gift cards for people like my husband, that I can't figure out what to buy. Every, every year, that list of can't figure out what to buy, that person gets longer. So if you want gift cards, just go see the Downtown Association in their current location for at least another month, then they are moving. I attended the RCMP Town Hall as well, and I thought it was interesting to note that property crime is down in the city. There has been a 16% decrease in break and enters, a 12% decrease in theft of motor vehicles, and a 10% decrease in theft under $5,000. Unfortunately, there's been a 7% increase in crimes against persons and a 12% increase in other criminal charges. So we're, we're still pushing that string uphill. I attended the International Day for Persons with Disabilities. Congratulations to Mika DeGroot for winning the award. Holiday Inn Open House at the Grand Prairie Educational Society, which Counselor Thiessen has already spoke about quite a bit. I thought it was really interesting for me, because I used to be a funder for them about 10 or 12 years ago, when there was only three people working in that little company. And now there's, I'd say, 12 or 17. So a big growth, and certainly they managed to develop a lot of parental support programming that they weren't able to deliver before. I attended Hillside Community School, grade six class presentations with Counselor O'Connor. He thought that they were lively, and I thought they were normal 12-year-olds. So kind of disagreed about that one. And finally, I attended the Grand Prairie Downtown Association Christmas Mixer at Grantberg Gallery, which is always a lovely place to be at this time of year. Maybe I should go there to buy Christmas presents. And Mayor Clayton concludes my report.
For that, Chair Blackmore. Many of the items or events I attended have already been mentioned. I, one that hasn't, I was appointed to the Alberta Municipalities Economic Development Committee. We had our first meeting for this year. It's a sort of a one-year appointment that starts in the fall of this year. So first meeting with that group, it was a good discussion. We had a presentation from Nate and their new skilled trades facility plans, as well as Minister Jones, job skills and training, job skills and training. It was a very good meeting, and it's a full day of meetings, so it was, I really enjoyed that. As mentioned, attended the Interfaith Breakfast, attended the proclamation, or brought the proclamation for International Day of Persons with Disabilities. As echo my colleagues, congratulations to Mika DeGroot. I had the privilege to be the guest speaker at the Grand Prairie Rotary Club, which is the Friday Rotary Club. It was a smaller group than the Wednesday Club that I usually attend, but very engaged, very knowledgeable, great questions. So appreciated that. Also, with some of my colleagues, attended the Grand Prairie Family Education Society Open House in their facility. It was a great way to learn about the many, many initiatives that they undertake. As well, attended with some of my colleagues, the Leaders of Tomorrow and Volunteer Awards Breakfast, which was great to see so many youth so engaged in the future success of our region. So congratulations to all the winners, including the Friendship Center and Len Ogier. Had an opportunity to have a conversation, a meeting with David Oaks, a new ATB Branch Manager, very engaged and excited to be in our community. So thank you to him for reaching out, and, and really, it's always so nice to see new people that move to our community that are extremely excited to be here and thankful. So that was a great conversation. Had an opportunity with administration to be part of a call, call with the Ukrainian Canadian Congress, the Alberta Provincial Committee. They were talking about an update of how Ukrainians are doing in our community, what council has done, and this organization has done to support Ukrainians in our community, and what the future looks like for more Ukrainians coming to Alberta. So that was a good conversation. As mentioned, attended the Chamber AGN, AGM, had the privilege to swear on the new Board Chair, Cord Spiro. Congratulations to him, as well. Thank you to Cindy Park as the outgoing Chair. I know as a former Chamber Chair, the year goes very quick, and there's a lot of activities the Chamber is involved in. It's great to have those conversations as they readjust themselves now that they're really focusing on advocating on behalf of business. It's nice to see them in that space again. So good luck to Cord in his year ahead. Thank you to Counselor Thiessen for bringing up the Convoy for Kids. Congratulations to Harold's Towing and GP Trucking for putting on an excellent event. And with that, I just quickly want to recognize an employee who, normally I wouldn't recognize employees when they're leaving, but an employee who worked very closely with council over the years. Thank you to Lydia Siddique as she moves on. But I also want to recognize a significant employee whose last council meeting with us, and I know we won't like this, but thank you to Arlen Miller. He has been a solid senior leader in our organization in many capacities, very nimble for a long period of time. And in, in times of need, Arlen, you really filled in for us. So thank you. We're gonna miss you. So if you're watching and you see him around the facility or the community, his last day is December 22nd. But yeah, Arlen's really, as I mentioned, been in various roles over my time on council, and always really filled in and supported us where we needed. So thank you to Arlen. With that, it's our last council meeting before the end of the year. I wish everyone an incredible holiday season. Half of council's already been sick, so probably the other half will get sick over Christmas. But I wish you some great time with family and friends, a time to take a little bit of a break. I actually kind of wish for snow, even though it's expensive. I do wish for it, because we need the humidity and the moisture. But just really enjoy your time away. If you're traveling, please travel safe, and I look forward to 2024. I know it'll be another incredible year in Grand Prairie. So thank you, everyone, and I'll call the meeting adjourned.